Good evening. Welcome to the February 16th, 2023, meeting of the Rutherford County Commission. If you would all stand with us, please, if I'll all stand with you, please. I'll call on our chaplain, Romell McMurray, for our pledge and our prayer.
Good evening, everyone. So this evening, I'm going to call on Ms. Lavia Harvey to come forward for me with me, please. So as you know, last month, I started something new. So as she comes up, Ms. Harvey is a fifth grader at Salem Elementary School here in Rutherford County. She is the student, is it council vice president?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, she is my pen pal. So we communicate, I try to, once a month. She'll send me a letter with some questions, and I'll do the same thing. So I just, like I said, I believe in public, you know, youth engagement. So this is why I'm trying to invite a different youth from someone from our schools each month. So appreciate you bearing with us, but let's engage our youth. So after the prayer, she's going to help us lead the Pledge of Allegiance, okay? All righty. Let us pray. Most gracious and loving God, we thank you for another day, whether it's a sunny day, a cloudy day, or it's thundering. It is you that sustains us all. It is you that's a provider. It's you that's a healer, and it's you that's a way maker. You saw fit for everyone in this chamber to make it here safely, and it is our hope that we make it back safely to our destinations. Being the month of February, which many calls a love month, I ask that you continue to teach us to love thy neighbors as thyself. There's a saying that says hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. I choose to believe that no matter what race, gender, ethnic background, or tax bracket that we're in, we will all strive to love one another. And dear Lord, I ask you to bestow your grace and your mercy upon all of us. I ask that you be with those that protect and serve our cities, our county, our state, and our country. Let there be unity and peace among us all. It's not about red, it's not about blue, but it's all about you. As the great Martin Luther King stated many years ago, "We may have some challenges or difficult days ahead, but that doesn't matter, because as a people, we know we're all going to get to the promised land, and we will achieve our goals." It's in your name that we pray, and I seal this prayer. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Turn the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn his flag.
By keeping strong and true, is it for pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee?
All right, and real quick, so I have a quick surprise. Come here, Ms. Harvey. Today is her birthday.
Oh!
So if everyone... Chairman, if it's okay, can we just sing a little quick happy birthday to her? If you don't mind. All right, here we go. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Ms. Lavia. Happy birthday to you. Let's give her a hand.
We're ready for our roll call. I'll call on our county clerk, Lisa Crowell.
Commissioner Oliver?
Present.
Here.
Rather.
Here.
Commissioner P. Commissioner Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Beverly?
Here.
Commissioner Cooch?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner James?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Paul Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Urban?
Here.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Dodd?
Here.
Chairman Phillips?
Present.
McAdoo?
Here.
Commissioner McMurray?
Here.
Mr. Gooch?
Here.
Mr. Serrano?
Here.
Abicarol, 21 present.
Thank you, Lisa. Next on our agenda, we have the reading and approval of our minutes, and I'll call on our chairman pro tem, Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have read the minutes and reviewed those, find everything to be in order. My motion is to dispense with the reading and accept the minutes as presented.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
To approve the minutes from our January meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. We have two items on our list, two resolutions for extraordinary service and leadership. The first one is going to be presented by Commissioner Romell McMurray. You're up again, Commissioner McMurray.
Good evening again. So I'm going to ask Commissioner Hope Oliver and Commissioner Allen McAdoo if they would like to come and stand, please. So with this being the month of February, I felt appropriate or thought it would be a good idea to acknowledge and recognize some individuals within our county for outstanding achievement and service in recognition of Black History Month. But of course, as I tell people, it's not just February, but it's all year. But this, I'm going to read a resolution for honoring Mr. Ricky Field. Do they need to come up? Come on up, Mr. Ricky. Mr. Field. Resolution honoring Mr. Ricky Field for extraordinary service and leadership in Rutherford County, Tennessee. Whereas, Mr. Ricky Field is a native of Rutherford County, Tennessee, a graduate of Oakland High School, and a graduate of Middle Tennessee State University. And whereas, Mr. Ricky Field is currently employed by the Rutherford County Schools as a physical education teacher at Riverdale High School, and serves as an assistant football coach and the head track coach at Riverdale High School. And whereas, Mr. Ricky Field has given Rutherford County and surrounding areas a tremendous amount of hard work, dedication, and commitment to excellence. And whereas, Mr. Ricky Field has been honored as Riverdale's High School Teacher of the Year, the American Heart Association Volunteer for Outstanding Service in Advancing Cardiovascular Health and Fitness, the MTSU Kappa Alpha Psi Community Award, the NAACP Jerry Anderson Award, the Men of Distinction Achievement Award, and as a 2019 MTSU Unsung Hero Award for Excellence in Athletics. And whereas, Mr. Ricky Field serves his community as a Big Brothers Big Sisters of Middle Tennessee mentor, a Fellowship of Christian Athletes sponsor, a member of the American Alliance for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. He's a member of the Board of the Directors of the National Youth Sports Program, AWARE, Freedom of Worship Outreach Church, MTSU National Youth Sports Program, and the NAACP. And whereas, Mr. Ricky Field has been awarded the Tennessee Parks and Recreation Volunteer Service Award, the African American Athlete and Scholarship Association Appreciation Award, the 2008 Big Brothers Big Sisters Big Brother of the Year in the State of Tennessee Award, the 2017 Best High School Coach voted by Main Street, and awarded five times the Daily News Journal and District 7A, sorry, 7 AAA Track Coach of the Year. And whereas, Mr. Ricky Field is the longest tenured coach in Rutherford County. And whereas, Mr. Ricky Field has been a pillar in the Rutherford County community and abroad for decades. And therefore, be it resolved that in recognition of Black History Month 2023, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners express its great appreciation for the outstanding contributions made by Mr. Ricky Field to the citizens and youth of Rutherford County, Tennessee. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be entered permanently into the archives of the 2023 Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, signed on this 16th day of February 2023. Mr. Ricky Field. Thank you. I make a motion to honor this resolution honoring Mr. Ricky Field.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ricky.
Well, praise the Lord, everyone. Well, commissioners and everyone, and mayor, we thank you for everything. We thank you for this night. We thank you for church family here, friends, family, all here. We thank you for our director of school, Dr. Sullivan's here, and we thank you for all things here. We appreciate this award, and it's a great honor to be honored. You know, the word said, nothing goes unnoticed and unrewarded, and I thank you for it. And God bless you.
Next on our agenda, a resolution of extraordinary service and leadership for Ms. Florence Smith, and I'll call on Commissioner Hope Oliver.
Good evening.
Evening.
Resolution honoring Ms. Florence Smith for extraordinary service and leadership in Rutherford County, Tennessee. Whereas, Ms. Florence Smith is a native of Franklin County, Tennessee, a graduate of Holloway High School in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and a graduate of Tavaka Nazarene College in Nashville, Tennessee. And whereas, Ms. Florence Smith has been employed by Murfreesboro City Schools for over 25 years, and currently serves as an educational assistant at Bradley Academy Schools of the Arts. And whereas, Ms. Florence Smith is a member of the Berry Chapel AME Church in Lynchburg, Tennessee, where she serves as the church secretary and on the stewardess, suitor, trustee, and Kermit M. Wilson and Will Hinden Scholarship Committee auxiliary boards. And whereas, Ms. Florence Smith serves as a secretary to the local Women's Missionary Society, treasurer for the Fayetteville Area Women's Missionary Society, promotion and missionary education director, and life member to the East Tennessee Conference Women's Missionary Society, third vice president to East Tennessee Conference Lay Organization, and a member of the 13th Episcopal District of African Methodist Episcopal Church Women's Missionary Society. And whereas, Ms. Florence Smith is a life member of the Murfreesboro branch of the NAACP, where she serves as the membership chair, and serves as a member of the Tennessee State Conference of Branches Membership Committee. And whereas, Ms. Florence Smith is a member of the Board of Directors for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Scholarship Fund of Rutherford County Incorporated, and We Care Daycare Center in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. And whereas, Ms. Florence Smith serves as a member of the Bradley Academy Museum Friends Group, the African American Heritage Society of Rutherford County Incorporated, the Friends Group for the Stones River Battleground, and the Rutherford County Democratic Women's Party. And whereas, Ms. Florence Smith has been a member for over 35 years of the Rutherford County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, an organization that focuses on sisterhood, scholarship, service, and social action. My soror. And whereas, Ms. Florence Smith is a member of Venus Chapter 61 Order of the Eastern Star Prince Hall affiliation, where she serves as a treasurer, a member of District 18 Order of Eastern Star Prince Hall affiliation, and serves as conductress. And whereas, Ms. Florence Smith is a member of the White Dove Assembly 185 Order of the Golden Circle Prince Hall affiliation, where she serves as the loyal lady guide and as state grand loyal lady treasurer for the RT Butler Tennessee Council of Assemblies Order of the Golden Circle Prince Hall affiliation. Whereas, Ms. Florence Smith has received numerous honors and awards that include a certificate of achievement for the African American Heritage Society of Rutherford County 2020, the Marquee Who's Who in America 202021, and the Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Department Volunteer Award for her service with the Bradley Academy Museum and Cultural Arts Center. And whereas, Ms. Florence Smith has dedicated her life to civil rights, education, voter registration, and the arts. Therefore, be it resolved that in recognition of Black History Month 2023, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners express its great appreciation for the outstanding contributions made by Ms. Florence Smith to the citizens and youth of Rutherford County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be entered permanently into the archives of the 2023 Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. I move that we accept this resolution.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Like I said to the mayor and all the commissioners, I would like to thank you very much for this honor, and also, I would like to thank all of my family, friends, and loved ones, and the community for all their support and being here present tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Fields and Ms. Smith, for your extraordinary service to the citizens of this county. You are appreciated. Commissioner McMurray and Commissioner Oliver, thank you for bringing this forward for us to help celebrate these two extraordinary people's lives. Thank you. We have no one that has signed up for public hearings tonight. Elections and confirmations, I'll call on our steering vice chair, Pettis Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one, elective notaries. Commissioners, listing of the notaries may be found on your iPad. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item two, steering would like to announce one PBA vacancy to fill a retiring member's seat with the term expiring January 2026. Item number three, steering also wishes to announce a vacancy on the Conservation Board. That term expires February 2023. Item four, steering wishes to announce a vacancy on the Industrial Development Board with that term to expire March 2023. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Chairman Reed. Item J, resolution to approve the consent agenda. I'll call on our chairman pro tem, Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Per the request of Commissioner Oliver, I am removing item three, general purpose school fund budget amendments. I believe there's two, and I'm going to move that to M1E under the Budget and Finance Committee Report. Other than that, I find everything to be appropriate. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, absent item three.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda withdrawing item three to be considered under budget. All those in favor, we need to do a roll call, I'm sorry. Thank you, Nick. For this, we'll be on the board, so please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Item K, we have no unfinished business. Item L, we'll get to our public hearings, and I think we have a few minutes left, so we'll get right into our standing committee reports under item M. First up will be Budget Committee Chairman Robert P.
Our first resolution tonight, M1A, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. This is a request from the county clerk. Increase expense for communications, $12,500, and decrease unassigned fund balance of $12,500. And these are for additional phone funds. Under the recovery court, and this is actually was a grant, unassigned fund balance of $20,137, and increase revenue, DUI EP, other direct federal revenue of $60,410. Increase expenditures of salaries and wages, $30,050. Wages, Social Security, $1,865. Security pensions, $14,458. Disability insurance, $30. Medicare, $440. License, $300. Travel, $5,000. Other contracted services, $31,200. Contracted services, $12,000. And also, a decrease of expenditures of, and I'm going to go to the bottom here, totals of $3,500, and for M and R buildings, and then drugs and medical supplies, $12,096. Under county buildings, we have an increased expenditures, and this is a contract with government agencies of $238,361, and decrease in unassigned fund balance of $238,361. And this is actually money that we'll be paying with an agreement we have with the city of Murfreesboro on the garage, and that's in a shared expense. Resolve the 16th day of February 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Question, please.
Commissioner Oliver.
Yes, sir. Under recovery court, the increase in expenditures, was there new employees, or is this because we had additional employees that weren't initially budgeted?
I'll let Finance Director answer that for us, please.
So this grant is a carryover from the previous year, and so we did get an increase in this grant as well. What this is going to do, it does increase some employees. This is going to allow us to expand the DUI education program to have some nighttime classes, because what we were experiencing is a lot of people were working during the day, and they really needed to come to that program at night. So it does expand that with some of those employees, and along when we hire those employees, has to be some equipment for them and some things like that. So yes, it does expand some employees, a few.
Thank you.
Other questions? For this, of course, will also be on the board, so if you would, please cast your
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes.
Item M1B, this is a resolution from the Highway Department, and they've actually been able to do additional mileage over and above what they normally do, so they're asking for some more funds there. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the highway fund be amended as follows. A decrease in assigned fund balance of $2,400,000. Increase expenditures under other contracted service for $200,000. Asphalt, $2 million. Diesel fuel, $100,000. And bridge construction, $100,000. These cover asphalt, striping, diesel fuel, and guardrails. Resolve the 16th day of February 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Seeing none, we'll be on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote. Motion passes. Robert.
Item M1C, this is a resolution that covers change orders on our convenience centers. Whereas, Rutherford County authorized a contract with period construction in March of 2022 for improvements to the Solid Waste Convenience Center in Rockvale, Leanna, Weekly Lane, and Walter Hill. Whereas, the construction has commenced and period construction has presented change orders in the amount of $8,888.76 for the Leanna Convenience Center, and $10,977.12 for the Rockvale Convenience Center. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute change orders, a copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and Incorporated herein as reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim, with period construction for the Solid Waste Convenience Centers at Leanna in the amount of $8,888.76, and Rockvale in the amount of $10,977.12. And further, that the Solid Waste Fund budget be amended as follows to transfer the funding for the change orders to the General Capital Projects Fund. Increase expenditures transferred to other funds, $19,866, and a decrease to assigned fund balance, $19,866. Resolve this 16th day of February 2023. Mr. Chairman, I say move.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? For this will also be on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Mr. P., with that, we'll recess the Budget Committee and get into our public hearings. We have, if I'm not mistaken, we have three public hearings tonight, and I'll call on our Assistant Planning Director. our Assistant Planning Director Danielle Glaner. And if you're wondering why Danielle is here tonight, she's probably wondering the same thing, so y'all, y'all be easy on her.
Please.
Our Planning Director Doug Demossi, his, those of you that know Doug, he is a very family-oriented individual. His 12-year-old son Dominique has had some significant surgery. The surgery went well, but the family is in the healing process right now, and they're in, in need of our support and our prayer, so if you would remember the Demossi family when you pray, I would appreciate it, and I know that they would. So Danielle, that's enough for me, and you're up.
Thank you. We have three public hearings tonight, and the first one is filed by G.C. Central Valley, and involves the property located at Lebanon Pike and Central Valley Road. It is a request for plan unit development amendment, and the property is approximately 36 acres. This resoning request for the crossings of, at Walter Hill Development was originally approved by the Board of Commissioners at their December 16, 2021 meeting. The original application was for 126 units broken down into three products, and we included a table in your packets, but the breakdown of the original PUD involves 16 two-bedroom homes with a minimum size of 1,100 square feet, 84 three-bedroom homes with a minimum size of 1,200 square feet, and 26 detached single-family homes with a minimum size of 1,500 square feet. So the total number of residential units for this development is 126 with a density of 3.43 units per acre. The Planning Commission approved the preliminary plan for the detached single-family product at their July 25, 2022 meeting. The applicant was preparing to submit a site plan for the townhome element, but was proposing changes that staff felt rose to the level of a major modification as contained in Chapter Nine of our zoning ordinance. And the criteria that was being modified was the modification of bulk and height restrictions and any other development regulations expressly stated in the regulating pattern book. So the changes are, the approved pattern book specifically stated two-bedroom and three-bedroom townhome units, which the applicant wants to change to three-bedroom and four-bedroom townhomes. This will increase the number of bedrooms by 48. The approved pattern book specifically showed four- and six-unit buildings. The applicant wants to change this to allow four, five, six, seven, and eight-unit buildings, however, the overall number of buildings are decreasing from 21 to 16, the number of units are remaining the same. The applicant is also proposing to increase the minimum size of the townhomes from 1,100 square feet for the two-bedroom product and 1,200 square feet for the three-bedroom product to 1,800 square feet for both the three and four-bedroom products. So you see in your table in your packets, you will have 68 three-bedroom townhomes with a minimum size of 1,800 square feet, four-bedroom townhomes, a number of 32 four-bedroom townhomes with a minimum size of 1,800 square feet, and the detached single-family, which is 26 homes, that's remaining the same, and the minimum size is, square footage is 1,500 square feet for those homes. All units will have driveways adequate for four parking spaces. All townhome units will have two car garages, and all homes will be a minimum of 75% masonry product. The step system will be in the center of the development, and the applicant has included amenity areas throughout the property. So as part of the original proposal, the applicant's proposing a 1.75 acre commercial area at the intersection of Lebanon and Pike and Central Valley Road. This is not changing from the originally approved plan. A neighborhood meeting was held to introduce these changes to who might attend on December 5, 2022. No one showed up at the meeting with the exception of the applicant, the applicant's representatives, and county staff. So you can find additional information in the information that we uploaded on the iPad, you'll have the pattern book at your disposal. There will be two primary access points to this property, one access along Central Valley Road and the second along Lebanon Pike. These access points are unchanged from the originally approved plan. A traffic study was performed as part of this request, and turn lane improvements have been recommended. There will be signalization at the Lebanon Pike-Central Valley intersection, and a left turn lane has been proposed along Central Valley to access the site, and turn lane, additional turn lane improvements are proposed. There is not an increase in approved density as a result of the proposed changes, although the number of bedrooms is increasing. So during staff's presentation of this request at the Planning Commission meeting, there were some discrepancies noted in the pattern book. One was the number of three-bedroom units and four-bedroom units was reversed. There was also one additional three-bedroom unit on the concept plan then listed in the legend. The applicant's design team have corrected those details, and it's reflected in the revised pattern book on your iPad. Staff requested the addition of more visitor parking in the common areas closest to Lebanon Pike to show the drainage easement from the single-family area to the detention pond on the far west of the site, and to add a sidewalk along the main north-south access drive for better pedestrian access. The applicant has addressed these items in the revised pattern book, and there was also discussion on owner-occupied units versus renter-occupied units and changes in unit size, but following the public hearing, the Planning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote.
Any questions for Ms. Glaner at this time? Any questions? Not, we'll get on with our public hearing. This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item REZ 23-001, Jane Blair Myers. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this resoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Irwin. Have a motion to approve and a second, including staff comments. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Ms. Glaner.
Thank you. The second case we'll be considering tonight is filed by John Brothers. It involves the location at 6605 Miller Lane. It's a 20-acre site, and he is seeking a zoning amendment from residential medium to employment and activity center. Now, this request comes partially because of a zoning enforcement action. The applicant has been using a portion of the subject property as a storage area. Staff has been working with the applicant over the course of several months to clean up this property. We've held meetings with the applicant prior to the submittal of this application, and building codes and planning staff both advised him that we would consider a resoning request for the subject property, but they would have to show significant progress in cleaning up the property. We also stated to the applicant that site improvements would be required should this request be approved, including screening and paved parking areas. The applicant did not submit a concept plan with his application, but stated he is in the process of preparing one. It had not been received at the time these comments were prepared. Access to the site will be along Miller Road. The current activity on the property indicates that this will be the primary access. However, a future access to the east-west segment of Miller Road on the southern border of the property cannot be ruled out in the future. All parking and vehicular areas will have to meet our county requirements as demonstrated on the plan, and any improvements along Miller Road will have to be approved by the county's Highway Department. Depending on the use that's proposed in the development, staff can also require a traffic study should, should we feel one is necessary. All the properties surrounding the subject site are zone EAC or PUD for the existing landscaping company. The buffering along the property lines will not be required. However, certain uses and activities may require buffering such as open storage, trash receptacles, and landscaping is also required in parking areas. The conformance with our landscape requirements will be confirmed during site plan review. The, the use of the property being non-residential will also be subject to our performance standards and Section 1106 of the zoning ordinance. Most of Miller Road, especially on the east side, is already zone EAC or PUD. We felt that it's only a matter of time before the remaining land is requested to be zoned in a similar manner, especially considering improvements proposed to Exit 89 interchange in Epsmil. During the public hearing, several persons who live in the area spoke about the condition of the property. The Planning Commission also had questions on this following the hearing. The discussion primarily focused on the condition of the subject property and what steps the applicant would need to take to bring the site into compliance with our regulations. We explained that regardless of the zoning of the property, that it would need to be cleaned up. We also explained that we would work with the applicant on the site plan approval, but that improvements would need to be, include paved access drives, fencing, screening. And following discussion, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the request by a vote of eight to one.
Thank you, Ms. Glaner. Any questions at this point in time? Commissioner Oliver.
I just want some clarity on what do you mean by cleaning up?
Okay, so right now, he's using the site to store trailers and trucks, and the site has never been approved for any kind of development, and so it's out of compliance with the zoning ordinance.
If I'm not mistaken, the site will be cleaned up regardless of whether this resoning is approved or not. Any other questions? Seeing no, no one will be ready for our public hearing. This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item REZ 23-002, John Brothers. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this resoning request, please come forward. If you would, state your name and address for the record, please, and keep your comments to three minutes, if you could.
Okay, yes. Excuse me. My name is John, my name is John Brothers. I live at 4666 Millersburg Road, Bellbuckle, Tennessee. My wife and I own the property of discussion. We operate a trucking company, and we operate the, we use that property to store our own personal equipment there, and as it was brought to our attention at the last meeting, there was discussion about the excess amount of material being there on site. Since that meeting, I've spent a significant amount of time moving stuff that was not, you know, needed, moved off-site, loaded up a lot of debris and whatnot that has accumulated over time. I had two roll-off dumpsters dropped, and I have just about filled up two, two of those. They're still at the site, but they're ready to be picked up now. So we're just here to try to get, get things moving in the correct direction where we can use the property. You know, that's why we're here for the zoning.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this resoning request? Anyone? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any other questions or comments from the Commission? Commissioner Beverly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Oliver, just to touch base, there were a couple citizens that had concerns about this. They were present at the Planning Commission meeting. I've been in talks with them since then, and then I've also been in talks with Mr. Brothers. His goal is to bring it into compliance. He understands that just with the resoning does not make it, this issue doesn't go away, and he's committed to making sure this happens. So there will be another site plan, but there's been a lot of talks and making sure that this is taken care of on our side. That being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve with staff comments.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Glaner.
The last public hearing is an application filed by Danny Patel involving the property located at 5803 Shelbyville Pike. It's a one-acre parcel, and they are seeking a zoning amendment from residential medium density to plan unit development, and it's the applicant's intention to develop a restaurant and commercial use on the property. Their intent is to build a small restaurant on the property, and the purpose of the plan development request is to reduce the front yard setback to 25 feet, especially along the Shelbyville Pike frontage. The single-story building will be 2,200 square feet and be constructed primarily of brick and synthetic stucco. There will also be associated parking areas and a drive-through and window and Q lane. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on November 22, 2022, and concerns raised by those that attended included traffic, property value, and drainage. Additional information is also included in the pattern book that we've uploaded to your iPads. There will be two primary access points to the property, one access along Shelbyville Pike and one along Ellis Drive. The access along Shelbyville Pike will be right-in, right-out only, while Ellis Drive access will allow left turns back on into the Ellis Branch Estate subdivision. Ellis Drive also lines up with an existing median cut in Shelbyville Pike that will allow for left turns onto Shelbyville Pike heading south, as it currently does. An engineered site plan will be required prior to the development of the commercial area should this application be approved. The site plan will need to demonstrate compliance with all parking and access requirements for Rutherford County and the pattern book. Any improvements along Shelbyville Pike will require TDOT approval, and improvements along Ellis Drive will require approval by the county Highway Department. During the neighborhood meeting, concerns about traffic and safety were raised. Some of the residents in the area asked if a traffic signal was going to be installed at the intersection of Ellis Drive and Shelbyville Pike, although the applicant's representatives said that they did not think that one would be warranted, they would say that they would do a warrants analysis to see if that were the case. The applicant is proposing a 15-foot type-two buffer with an opaque fence to satisfy the county's landscape requirements. This buffer will be along the north and east property lines. They are proposing, also proposing a three-foot wide planting bed around the building foundation and along parking area plantings, and provide parking area plantings, my apologies. And again, they'll have to submit a site plan, and it will have to demonstrate meeting all of our requirements, and the use will be subject to our performance standards in Section 1106 of the zoning ordinance. We feel that the request is consistent with the recommendation of the county's comprehensive plan. Traffic is a concern, however, we feel that the proposed business will cater to, more to the existing traffic rather than generate much traffic. The applicant has also stated that their commitment to have a signal warrants analysis performed, and if the signal was warranted due to the development, the cost would be borne by the developer. The Planning Commission had some questions about any potential outside seating or bans. These questions were answered no by the applicant's representative, and there was also some discussion regarding the traffic in the area. Following the public hearing, which no one spoke, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the request by unanimous vote, nine to zero.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing open for item REZ 23-003 for Mr. Patel. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak on this resoning request, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Beverly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like our planning department said, they're willing to adhere to any study that warrants a traffic signal, and with a right turn lane onto 231, safety is a, is a huge concern, but that being said, I'd like to move for approval on this with staff comment.
Have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Danielle, you did good. We appreciate you being here. We'll get back to our committee reports, and Commissioner Chairman P., you're still up. up.
Item M1D has to do with the school's central cafeteria budget, and just so you know exactly what's going on here, this is basically an amendment to move $850,000, a decrease in the school's fund balance and a $850,000 increase in expenditures for the increased cost of supplies and equipment, as well as prior year obligations becoming current year expenditures in the centralized cafeteria fund. Resolution, be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the centralized cafeteria fund be amended according to the schedule attached heretofu as exhibit one and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth at length verbatim, resolved this 16th day of February 2023, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Questions? This will be on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one, yes.
Motion passes. Now we'll get to item three that's been, item three from the consent agenda that's been removed and transferred to the Budget Committee. Commissioner P.
Okay. Be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general purpose school fund be amended according to the schedule attached heretofu as exhibit one and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, resolved this 16th day of February 2023, Mr. Chairman, I so move. And I'll go ahead and further state, this is money, I think the total is $88,983. This is a state grant to be used for a voluntary pre-K class. This class has been set up at Plainview Elementary School, and just so you know, if this grant goes away, that class will go away.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions? I'm sorry, I didn't get a second. My fault. Is there a second? We have a second. Thank you. Now discussion.
Question. Mr. Chairman, when you say when the grant goes away, the class goes away, how long is the grant good for? Or how, how long will those funds, I guess, support a pre-K class?
I'll, I'll refer that to our finance director. Essentially, these are year-to-year funds as appropriated by the state legislature. I would not anticipate this going away. I know the Director of Schools is here, but they are year-to-year based on the appropriation by the state legislature, but many districts, almost every district across the state relies on this, and we have, Rutherford County Schools has several voluntary pre-K classrooms, and so I don't anticipate them going away anytime soon, but I can't, you know, I can't promise anything based on what the state legislature does.
And these are federal funds, correct?
State funds.
State funds.
Commissioner Oliver, I see our school superintendent. Would, would you like to ask him questions on this, or are you okay?
I'm fine with the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Beverly.
More just a comment. This is going to Plainview Elementary School and Christiana Elementary School in my district. I've toured both of those, and I believe Dr. Sullivan and Mr. Lafferty and Dr. Gagne, who are the principals at these schools, would welcome these funds and be able to serve these children. It's a good way to get them segwayed into our education system.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
Let, let me go ahead, and since there, there are actually two amendments under this, and we've only got one resolution, which I assume will cover both of them, so let me go ahead and explain the second one, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Separate.
I mean, it's under the same resolution, but it's, it's a, you know, how the school will bring us multiple requests.
You want to do them separate?
I'd like to do them together.
Okay.
The second one are actually federal funds and...
If you want to do them separate, let's go ahead and vote on the first one. Okay. Did you say you wanted to do them together?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought you wanted to separate them. I'm sorry. My, my bad. Go ahead.
Point of order.
I'm sorry.
Didn't we already have a motion and a second for the one?
Yes, we did.
So then that needs to be rescinded?
Both of these amendments were under that, that same resolution that Chairman P. read.
Let's remove the motion and the second, and then go ahead and discuss it, okay? Is that okay? I think it was the second. We're, very good. We'll go ahead and, and discuss the second one. Commissioner P.
Let me get to the right page here. These are federal funds, and I'll probably need some help from our finance director on these two. IDEA, I believe is the acronym for that. This is basically a cleanup amendment, and we're actually getting $375,000 of new money, but most of this money is being spent, or a lot of it is being spent, on custodial supplies that are across the school system, and there's around, I think, $1 million just on custodial supplies. This was explained to us the other day at, at Budget, but as I stated earlier, I'm not, I'm not trying to move anything past anybody here. I only have one resolution to read under both these items, and that's why I would suggest we look at both of them together. So I'll reread this motion, which will cover both of these resolutions, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
All right. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the, that the general purpose school fund be amended according to the schedules attached heretofu as exhibit one and incorporated herein by reference as if set herein at length verbatim, resolved this 16th day of February 2023, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Very good. Now we have a motion and a second. Discussion. We've already discussed the first motion, and this is the second one. I think it's 375,000 bucks, if I'm not mistaken. Any questions on that?
Question.
Yes, Commissioner Oliver.
You stated that a portion of it is for custodial supplies. What is the remainder for?
You know, I'm not sure. There's a, there's a large breakdown. I don't, I don't know if you have this on your, on your iPad or not, so.
It, it should be on your iPad. You'll have to go under consent agenda, and if you go under consent agenda, it's item number three. And I'm going to give a little, little bit more context to, to this one to answer your question, Commissioner. So this is money coming from federal money from IDA discretionary funds, $375,000. That's new money into the general purpose school fund. And then on top of that, there is an additional four million, a little over $4 million that the schools have asked for a cleanup amendment. Their board did pass this. They're utilizing money that they're not spending on textbooks in their general purpose school fund. I do believe they plan on using federal funds for some textbooks, so they're moving approximately $3 million out of their textbook line item. And like Chairman P. said, a million of that is going to custodial supplies, and then they're various, cleaning up other various line items, and I do believe this amendment also covers seven ESL positions that's required by the state, and I also believe this budget amendment would cover, covers an additional grant rider for the school system. And anything further than that, I think Dr. Sullivan may have to speak to that since the, they submit these to us.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes, so you're saying there are employees involved in this, so will these be recurring federal funds, or is this, what's going to happen?
So, so this is IDA discretionary funds, and so what that means is there's disproportionality that the state comes down and says you have to use this certain amount of funds for certain specific things. Now, if that were to ever go away, then these federal funds could, would stay in their federal projects fund to be spent on other costs, usually special education or other IDA cost. However, they are doing reoccurring funds, but they're using reoccurring funds in this budget amendment. They're utilizing savings, just moving between line items.
Any other questions? Ready to vote? This will also be on the board, so if you would, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty, yes. One abstain.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you.
Our next budget meeting, committee meeting, will be March 9th.
Commissioner Oliver, thank you for that point of order. I screwed up a little bit, so I appreciate you pointing that out. I'll do better, you guys. Thank you. Next up is Health and Ed, Chairman Field Dot.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of points from our minutes of our last meeting. The community care, the lease for the, the property is on the SharePoint, and we, we put this out for, at last month's meeting. I opened the floor for questions from the Health and Ed Committee, so I want to reiterate, if anybody reads that lease and has any questions, please email me. And, and further, if any other commissioners have any questions over the, the next week, please get those to me. Give us a week to invite anybody from the community care that may need to address those questions. So check out your SharePoint for that. One question was, Vice Chair asked about the daycare, and Mayor Carr advised us that the generation's connection, connected expansion has been placed on hold. And all further, Commissioner Phillips suggested that commissioners submit questions regarding, concerning CCRC, so Chairman will look for that. On the school board, of course, we have the three amendments we just discussed. Also, Commissioner Davison requested a maintenance report, so Chairman Sullivan, excuse me, Director Sullivan will have the capital projects report presented to Health and Ed next week, excuse me, two weeks, and also the maintenance report, Fund 177. So we'll be able to see those and help, and dissect those on the committee level. At the February 9th school board meeting, the board voted to request three additions and one new elementary school beyond the capital campaign request for this year, so we will officially hear that request from the, the Dr. Sullivan at our next meeting. I think the bids have begun to open. I think the first one came in a few million dollars underestimates, and I'm not sure if the other two are open. Vice Chair, have you been abreast of that? But just one has been opened thus far, and perhaps when we meet on February 28th, we can get the other, we may have another one. We may have one more, so stay tuned for that. And the final item that, from our minutes, is Commissioner Phillips requested information on the cafeteria fund be presented at the next school board meeting as well. So please stay tuned for that. Our meeting is Tuesday, February 28th, in these chambers at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Chairman Dodd.
Chairman, just to follow up on the chairman's request, Trailley informed us that the bid for Riverdale was due March 2nd, and the bid for Oakland on March 16th, and then the next school board meeting would be the 23rd, where they would put those bids through. Health and Ed is four days later, so all that stuff's going to be really stickin' and movin', but it's all coming up soon. And yes, Smyrna's bid was 3% under what we had originally estimated, that, which is good news.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Property Management, Chairman Allen McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had one issue, thing on the agenda of sale of Single Road Home and Barn Sheds. I would like that pulled and sent back to committee for further discussion. Also, our meeting is February the 23rd, and normally we do something different than other committees. We are tour county properties. So next Thursday at 3:30, we will be touring the convenience center out on Shelby Highway. That's the convenience center where we bought the church, some of you remember, and we're using that property to get the traffic off of Shelby Highway. It was a mess, only one entrance in, one entrance out, so I know this commissioner right here, he's thankful that we did that, but we will be touring that also out there at that committee, at that convenience center. I'm aware that they had the fire that burned up their storage house, so we will be touring that also because I'm informed that maybe the electricity is not on yet, so. Any commissioner want to join us? We'll be there 3:30 Thursday.
Thank you, Commissioner McAdoo.
Chair, I'm sorry, I do have a question for Chairman of Property Management, if I may.
Commissioner Goode.
Go ahead. Okay, thank you, Chairman McAdoo. And I do apologize, I was not able to watch the meeting, so if I'm missing something, just please apologize. But under other business, paragraph two, says Chairman McAdoo advised that the commission approve naming a building. The approval didn't include a sign, signage, or plaque. However, Chairman McAdoo stated that the specifics concerning the approval needed to be located. Are y'all referring to the Bart Smith One Stop Building?
Yes, sir. And at our next meeting, we're pulling the minutes of that, that was passed on the full commission, and the reason we're bringing it up is that, number one, the PBA is asking, what specifically do we want? Do we want maybe, for examples, eight-inch ledgers or whatever? And we, we don't, we don't know that. So that's the reason we bring it up at our next committee meeting, and we're going to pull the, like I said, the amendment.
The manors from the commission meeting. Okay.
And we'll discuss it there, but as far as it not being done, it will be done, but we need to know how we're going to proceed, and the PBA was asking that question.
Thank you so much for the clarification. Appreciate it, buddy.
Chairman McAdoo has requested that we remove the sale of Single Road Home from the agenda. Is there any objections to that? Seeing none, so be it. Item M5, Public Safety, Chairman Pettis Reed.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, come to well, but I didn't want my back to some of the commissioners out here. What you're seeing there as listed in Public Safety deals with full-time fire and rescue Commissioners, what I'm coming forward with, if you'll remember at our last commission meeting, that we had discussion concerning the possibility of moving forward with full-time firemen at our public safety buildings. And all we were basically doing in that motion was working forward to having full-time firemen in Rutherford County and putting placing them within this public safety building. That's all we were doing. You requested that you felt like we needed to discuss this more with our volunteers, try to get their input in this, to get some way of discussing this, and we took that. We brought that before the Public Safety Committee at our last meeting. I have the minutes here with me where we did that. We took approximately an hour out of that meeting, at the very last of that meeting. We had a total of seven to come forward. We gave them opportunity to speak as long as they, we told them three minutes. I had a timer up here, and I want to tell you, I do not have a very tricky finger as far as pushing it. We actually let some of them go a lot longer than that because they were very passionate in what they were saying. We appreciate our volunteers and what they've done over these years, and I think our Public Safety Committee voiced that, that in the evening. They, they said that. They, they said that, and, and we had many of the firefighters that were here to say exactly what they thought, and, and some of them said in both, both situations, those for, those against, those talking about current situations that we're having this day in time. So after the public hearing and got through talking about what the volunteers had to say, we came back to the Public Safety Committee to discuss it, to go that direction, and what they basically come back to is that they wanted to come back to you again this evening to tell you that they feel like still they wish that Rutherford County needs to go to full-time. to full-time staff within these buildings for the benefit of the citizens of Rutherford County. And that's what we're coming back with this evening.
Questions? We don't have a copy of the resolution, I think, on the agenda, but it was the one that was presented, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Chairman, there's not a resolution, and I'm leaving it up to this committee to just make another motion.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner James?
During Public Safety, I made the motion to move it up to this point, to continue forward with the full-time county fire department, and with the idea of continuing communication with those parties involved to come up with a plan of action to move forward together. And after the last couple of weeks, I've seen that they started. Sometimes the answers have not been what everybody wanted to hear, but it has started with the communication. So I'd like to make that same motion.
We have a motion and a second. Now discussion.
Repeat the motion, please.
That the county proceed with the, going with the full-time fire department with proper communication with our predecessors, the volunteers.
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you prefer to go first, Chairman P? So this is, it's rather open-ended, so it's timeframe... I don't even know where to start. So we're talking 15 fire, professional firefighters, and 12 EMS, as I recall, is what we had for Rockvale, something along those lines?
Yes, you're correct there.
So 27, let's rent 30 new employees every year or every six months until we, as this six buildings come online. When they come online, they're going to be filled.
When those buildings do come online, that's what we'll be having there. Now, the thing is, when you're talking about Walter Hill, that's already there. That's already in motion.
And I know the Barfield, there's some staff out there.
The Barfield's there, too. But now, we're talking about Las Cassas, you're talking about Christiana. So Las Cassas will possibly be, we'll be talking about that building this next year, coming on. We're already got the plans, we're already have, getting ready to go with those buildings coming up, hopefully this year, starting the building of those, which they'll possibly be coming available next year. And then we'll be getting ready for, and Christiana at that time, too. So then, we'll just only be liking Amalville, or what we're talking about, Delray.
So with Amalville, 90, with Delray, 120 new employees.
And you're talking about this, our...
By this vote, we're saying, yes to, we're saying, we're considering 120 new employees over time.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. And let me tell you something. I know what you're talking about, these number of firefighters. You're talking about possibly, where we're talking about paying for these and the cost. We just found out this evening, and right now, we're looking at a grant right now for the possibility of 45 new firefighters coming that away. So this is going to be over three years. Now, I know you look at, well, out there in the distance, where we go there. There are other ways that we're seeing that we can take care of that, too. The thing we're looking at is what's the future for this county and what we're having to do. And you just look at the past two years as far as what we're growing and what we're seeing. And that's what we're looking at.
If there were, let's say, in two years, we're looking for an additional 30 people in our finances or such, that we need to tighten our belt, and 30 new employees may not fit with the expenditures. We will be able to discuss these. They'll be presented through budget. We'll get to dissect each round of hiring. Let's say, for instance, that a fire hall, that there are no statistics that support 30 personnel, or there aren't enough trips in a region that might support a full 30. I'm just making that up as a supposition. We will be able to look at these each, as each one comes online.
Absolutely. We'll be looking for these each year. I mean, every time they come available, we'll be looking at this all the way down the line.
Thank you. So tonight, there's not 30 employees being requested tonight. It's a path towards pulling the volunteers out and backfilling with full-time personnel, as needed.
Yes, I think I understand you correctly.
I'm looking at it with the communication aspect added to it, to help have them in the room to create the plan of action moving forward, so that they're included, so that it's more of a hybrid until we can afford fully and keep them as purpose. I certainly do not want to risk losing our volunteers on any level.
Other questions? Commissioner Rather?
I'm probably repeating what you just said. Two days ago, there was a fire about a mile away from me. A guy had a brush fire. I was coming home, and I could see white smoke and black smoke. And I thought, oh, my goodness. Well, his fire got way out of control. I wasn't going to bring this up tonight. It burned his shed down, equipment in the shed, burned up two of his trailers. Rutherford County was there. There were probably five sheriff's deputies there. Rutherford County was there. Volunteers were there. And it was about to get out of control, and neighbors started showing up, which goes back to, it takes a village to raise a child. It takes a village to put a fire out sometimes in a community. And I took a picture of one of the chiefs, who's sitting back here, and another firefighter at a fire truck. And only after I got home, did I realize there was a Murfreesboro City Fire Truck out in the county off Shacklet Road. And there was a Murfreesboro City firefighter. So the reality is, there was a dump truck fire on the interstate at the same time. There was two, three things going on. The reality is this. In my mind, we're voting tonight to let Public Safety and others involved move forward in this direction. Period. No real plan. There's ideas, there's some plans that may be sketched out. Some of the things may already, you know, be worked out, but we've got, as Chairman Reed said, we're going to be dealing with this for, I think, years to come. But I look at what's best for my family, my mom and dad, my neighbors, my district, and y'all's district, what's best for the citizens, because that's why we're here. And obviously, right now, we have to have paid firefighters. We have to have volunteers. And on occasions, like I witnessed, Murfreesboro City Fire Department. I never would have thought that. But it takes a lot of people to do what it takes to protect lives and protect property. And so that's going to be worked on for a long time. I said this in Public Safety, this is something we've worked out in six months. It's going to take a while. So again, tonight is saying to Public Safety, this commission says to Public Safety, let's take that next step. And let's work all together to put a plan in place that's going to work for Rutherford County. Thank you, Chairman.
Well said, Commissioner Rather. Anyone else? Commissioner P.
Well, this sounds really good, but it's not. Reason I say that, there's no discussion with the Ketchel's Volunteer Fire Department. Their board was told that in April, when that station at Ketchel opens, it'd be manned with 15 paid firefighters. So what are you going to discuss about that, Public Safety? No, that sounds like a done deal to me. There's no discussion. One other thing I will mention, I am working, my capacity is budget person, to find funding for us. We're going to need it. I think I've found a way to get around some of the problems that we've got. And I've already told Commissioner Reed about it, and I'm going to sit down and talk to him about it. But having said that, I want you all to know that nothing comes free. This is going to cost you some money, as Chairman Dodd was pointing out. For instance, these 15 paid firefighters are only funded through half of this coming budget year. After that, you're going to have to find money for that. And we've applied for the firefighter grant last year, and we were turned down. So whether we'll get that grant or not, that would be good. I, you know, we'll take it if we can get it. But I want you to be aware, where you're going, you're looking at a tax increase.
Anyone else?
Yeah, why not?
Commissioner Piercy.
You know, this has been kicked around for a long time. I was on Public Safety, and some of it was kind of started back then. And in the last year or so, these new buildings have come up. I think it was perceived that the volunteer firemen would automatically take these new buildings over. I had, I have not heard that said through a committee that I've sat on whatsoever, or the committees I have watched. Our area, just take like the Las Cassas area. We've got one subdivision out there now that's under construction. And when it's finished, probably in the next eight years, it'll have 1,200 homes in it. We've got several other construction sites out there. They're building 200, 300 homes in one location. Our community has outgrown even our volunteers doing everything they can possibly do. And I have supported them since day one. My family has donated to them since day one. Now, they're mad at me tonight. We had a little crossing over a few months ago, but we won't go there. But I'm still in support of our volunteer firemen. With your resolution you're making tonight, you need to include an olive branch in that resolution that we would like for our volunteers to stay and assist any way they possibly can, because we will need them. We'll need their extra tankers, we'll need their extra help, we'll need their brush trucks. I witnessed a fire like Mr. Rathard did at one of our neighbors up two, three weeks ago. Guy burning a little trash, set his whole front of his farm on fire. They come and helped assist put it out. I've had them come and assist putting fires out for me in another county. They didn't have to come, but they did. We need to extend an olive branch out to them. They think we're wanting to kick them out. I've never said it. I've never heard it said on this floor. And I think that needs to be cleared up. If you could reword your resolution to extend, I know you're wanting to move forward with talks, but you need to add to that, moving forward with talks to allow them to stay and assist. Thank you.
If I may, I thought that's where I was going with that, but I would love to clean that wording up, just as stated, to create the path for them to stay and join us as moving forward.
Those comments are part of your motion? Comments are part of the second?
Second, yes.
Thank you for clearing that up, Commissioner Piercy. Thank you. Anything else?
One last comment, and I'll stop commenting. Commissioner Piercy's on budget. Mr. Dodd, you're also on budget, or were our last time. And when these buildings were brought up, I pushed very hard to get them in there, along with Commissioner Reed. And one of the selling points was, I think you probably recall, I said that the stations at Ketchel would be manned by the volunteers, because it was specifically asked, how were we going to fund the people? We knew we had the grant money. I don't know if you recall that or not, Commissioner, but if you do, I'd... And that was one of the committee meetings that you sat in where it was mentioned. So it was the intent of budget at that time for these stations to be manned by volunteers.
I don't give up.
Commissioner Piercy.
Thank you for the floor. I was asked to come to a meeting to discuss the extra building that's being built in my district. At no time, and Mr. P was there, at no time was it ever mentioned how it would be manned. No time. And I'm not going to argue about it. It's neither here or there. You know, you will need the paid volunteer, the paid firefighters sooner or later, because volunteers are getting harder and harder to find, because most of them are having to work away from home. On the weekends, it's great. During the day, in the work hours, it's kind of thin. It is at mine, I'm sure it is at yours, it's probably at all of them, because they all function the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Commissioner Beverly?
I was one of the voices that wanted to send this back to Public Safety last month. I wanted, we wanted the input of the volunteer firemen, and we got that. Everyone was heard. We want them to continue to have a place to volunteer. They volunteered for, some of them volunteered for 25-plus years. Chief Farley has said, as long as they adhere to the background checks and the regulations that their department has for volunteers, they'll welcome them with open arms. That is what we are moving under the impression of, that they will still have a place to volunteer. And I'm going to be very disappointed if that changes in the future. With that being said, this is the second time around with this same debate, I'd like to call for the question.
Question has been called for. All those in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Question has been called. Okay, we're just going to do a voice vote on this. So I think the motion, if I can paraphrase, is for Rutherford County to move forward over a length of time, as we have in the past, move forward to a full-time firefighting force without making significant changes to the volunteers and the way they're being utilized right now. If I'm paraphrasing that incorrectly, y'all help me with that. Any other questions? We had the question called. I don't think we had a second for that, but anyway, the question's been called. So with that, we'll vote, and we're going to do a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Chairman Reed, was that all you had? Okay, I think your next meeting, 27th, correct. Public Works Chairman Mike Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. February was a little light. March is going to be very busy. There'll be a lot to report in March. Our next meeting will be March 7th. That's it.
Thank you. Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee, Chairman Craig Harris.
Commissioners, we have four items for steering committee. The first one is our absentee resolution. Whereas, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners believe it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County to implement an absenteeism policy with respect to the board of committees listed herein below to ensure efficient operation of said boards and committees. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that any member of the following boards and/or committees that is absent for three consecutive meetings or four meetings in one calendar year shall be replaced. Those committees include Adult Entertainment Board, Agriculture Advisory Board, Audit Committee, Beer Board, Code Enforcement Adjustments and Appeals Board, Historic Courthouse Board of Trustees, Insurance Committee. Resolve this 16th day of February 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second. Second.
Question?
Go ahead, Op.
Uh, which of these boards are you having attendance issues with?
Well, we've been trying to have an absentee, we've had some problems in, uh, PBA, which is, uh, one of our, we, we're having a hard time getting a quorum. So I've been asked by boards to look into this. We've been trying to do this for a while, and we, we've looked at all the requirements on these boards, and this is the ones that we can deal with. And if Nick needs to comment on any of the reasons why I chose these, are you wanting to know why I chose these certain boards?
I was curious which one was having attendance issues, and you just said PBA, but they're not on here. So I was just concerned.
PBA goes through a different thing, but we've had, we're wanting to, we've been wanting to do it in absentee, uh, uh, absentee policy for a while, and we had to go through all the legal parts of it, and this is the boards that we can do it on.
My question is, is there any excused absence in there, AKA like military leave, or?
Yeah, well, yeah. If there's a long-term health or a military that would go before the steering in a special meeting, that is not something that'll be on this insurance, I mean, on this absentee policy. That would be a special meeting, that would be special brought up on the agenda in steering.
So this would be the basic rule that gets it to where you have the right to remove them, and then they have to defend themselves essentially?
Yes. And if we have a situation like that, we're gonna go before the committee and, and talk about that with the steering committee.
But with that, with that, things like the example I gave, military leave, obviously orders would come in early. If they were to preempt that, that'd be kind of just, we know what's going on here, we don't need to proceed, that kinda?
Yes.
Just your standard HR.
Well, someone gets sick and has a long, uh, uh, term care or something like that, that would be something that would be brought up before the committee to discuss and brought back to y'all.
Other questions or comments? Ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Our Commissioners, next is the Rockville Annexation. Whereas the Planning Commission for the City of Murfreesboro at its February first, twenty twenty-three meeting, recommended that certain properties whereupon Rockville Middle School, Rockville High School, Rockville Elementary School, and the Rutherford County Public Health and Safety Building of Rockville are located namely Tax Map one-two-three parcel oh-one-six-hundred and Tax Map one-two-three part of parcel oh-one-eight-hundred. By the City of Murfreesboro, a copy of which is attached heretofu as Exhibit A. Whereas TCA six-five-one-one-oh-one requires that prior to annexation of said properties, written consent of the property owners of the real property to be annexed is required. And whereas Rutherford County Board of Commissioners does not believe that it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for said properties to be annexed into the City of Murfreesboro. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that Rutherford County does not request and does not give its consent to the annexation of the properties as recommended by the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission on the Exhibit A. Resolve this sixteen day of February twenty twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
Have a motion and a second. Questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you.
This is the resolution on, uh, our committees. Whereas Rutherford County Steering Committee has recommended certain amendments to the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners' rules and regulations to account for how items not on the agenda are not previously considered by the appropriate standing committees may be presented to the Board of Commissioners. And whereas is in the best interest of Rutherford County that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners' rules and regulations be amended as provided herein. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the following shall be added to the end of Rule three A. Except for budgetary items in emergency situations, any member desiring action upon or consideration of an item not on the agenda or not previously considered by the appropriate standing committee must attain approval by a two-thirds majority of the Board of Commissioners before such item may be considered. Be it resolved that an updated version of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners' rules and regulation that incorporates said amendment, a copy of which is attached heretofu as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference as set forth herein length verbatim shall be and hereby is adopted and approved. Be it further resolved that to the extent necessary, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners handbook be and the same as hereby amended and set forth herein. Resolve this sixteen day of February twenty twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Now discussion or questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Irwin.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Chairman, at the outset, I want to say that committees have an important role to play at the commission. They take the work that the commission assigns them, and they do a lot of heavy lifting. My concern here is that this proposed resolution, on a policy level, has a potential effect of dramatically changing the commission's resolution process and related voting requirements. I've worked with a lot of boards and governing bodies over the years. And in my view, these process and voting changes would restrict the ability of a commissioner, and by implication, his or her constituents, to propose and seek approval of resolutions before this commission. How would they do that? Well, let's take a look at the process on a policy level. And to do that, I have a few questions. And there's no answers to these questions on, in the proposed resolution. A couple definition, definitional issues at the outset. What is an emergency as used in the proposed resolution? Who decides? Again, it's not defined or covered. What is meant by budgetary as used in the proposed resolution? Who decides? Why does the resolution refer to the appropriate standing committee? When there may be more than one committee that has an interest in the resolution? Who decides which one is the appropriate standing committee for this purpose? What are the specifics of the two-thirds majority approval process that a commissioner would have to go through to get the commission to hear his or her resolution? How much information would the proponent of a resolution be allowed to provide in that process? Exactly how would it occur? What would it take? This is important. What would it take for a standing committee to have considered, as that term is used in the proposed rule, a commissioner's resolution? For example, if four members of a standing committee voted no on a resolution proposed by a commissioner, would the resolution then go to the full commission because it'd been, because it had been considered? Or would the resolution just die? And if the answer is that it would just die, are each of you willing to give up to four members of a standing committee, your ability to make resolutions? Here's a, a really important question. How would amendments to resolutions be handled? I guess, under the terms of the resolution, if they're budgetary, budgetary or, or emergency, whatever that means, amendments could be considered. But all other amendments would have to meet this proposed resolution's two-thirds majority test. Basically, this resolution would push a lot of amendments through the new process. But my view is, we don't know a lot about how the resolution process in the proposed resolution would work. We don't know what key terms mean, which committee or committees would have to consider it, or what consider even means in this context. What the mechanism would look like to get to the threshold of two-thirds majority vote, or how amendments to resolutions would be handled? This could be messy, convoluted, and unpredictable resolution process. So let's look at how, how the potential changes to the voting, let's look at the potential changes to the voting requirements. That is, the voting requirements that could be changed as a result of the proposed resolution. This mainly goes to conflicts with other rules. How would they be handled? I took a look at the current rules on a policy level, and there are a number of potential conflicts between the potential, between the proposed two-thirds majority test and current voting requirements. Keep in mind, these arise because the proposed resolution says, "Any member desiring action upon or consideration of an item not on the agenda or previously considered by the appropriate standing committee must obtain two-thirds majority of the commission before such item may be considered." So let's get to specifics. Rule one G says, "Any member may appeal to the commission from the ruling of the chairman, with a majority vote deciding the appeal." On a policy level, would the resolution change that? And the answer is yes. As long as it's non-budgetary and not an emergency, it's an item covered by the requirement of a two-thirds majority. It's not on the agenda, and it's not been previously considered by a standing committee. Rule one N says, "The commission rules can be amended at any time by a majority of the commission." Would this, would the resolution change that? Yes. Same answer as before. Rule one N also says, "The commission may suspend the rules by a two-thirds majority." And this is where it gets really kinda mind-numbing. Would you have to get a two-thirds vote to get the motion heard, and then another two-thirds vote to suspend the rules? Every time? Short answer? Yes. Same answer as before. Okay, Rule, Rule seven D provides for an appeal to the commission if there's a disputed decision as to the committee jurisdiction by the steering committee. On a policy, policy level, what's the vote required for that appeal? Candidly, it's not clear. Presumably, you'd have to get the two-thirds majority, and then maybe you could get the other. But I'll admit, it's not clear. Okay, the same for Rule one O, that says all matters not covered in the rules are governed by Robert's Rules of Order. On a policy level, is the intent to override Robert's rules? If so, where and how? And if a matter's not covered, does Robert's rules set the vote approval percentage? Or does the resolution? Okay, I'm not sure I know the answer to that question. What it is a question? Okay, I could go on and on, I'll, I won't. But there appears to be additional policy level conflicts. And I have to say that I've not looked into the potential for statutory or similar policy level conflicts. The problems identified are the ones I saw in about forty-five minutes worth of work. From my working with many boards, adoption of this resolution would create a nightmare scenario with convoluted vote after vote on matters that are currently routinely handled with usually minimal controversy or drama. There may be an occasional hiccup with the current system, but this resolution likely would mean, would likely mean we would all become experts on the points of order and complex resolutions instead of spending time, spending that time on the business our constituents sent us here to do, focusing on transparency while we address budgets and taxes, public safety, landfill, education, and other issues. As we sit here now, there is a process in place that allows any commissioner to bring a resolution to the commission. And there's a process that allows the commission to either consider and vote on it, or by majority to vote to refer it to the appropriate committee or committees. In my view, we don't need an untested, more complex rule that makes it harder than that and introduces all kinds of uncertainties or conflicts with a number of existing rules. Respectfully, the question each of us has to ask is whether we're willing to take the time to deal with all the uncertainties and conflicts and to give up the current process and voting requirements that enable each of us to introduce resolutions, have them heard promptly and fairly. I'm not willing to give that up for myself, and more importantly, to my constituents. I recommend you vote against the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman? So... I don't have much. From my view of this entire process, it is to solidify the committee's role. That's what the purpose of this is for. It's not eliminating anybody's ability to bring something to the floor. It's just changing from a simple majority to a two-thirds majority. But he, he brought up a point that does need to be examined. What if two committees deal with this issue? Isn't that what this resolution is for, is to say, look, send this to a committee to make sure that this is being handled at their level? Chairman McAdoo made a great point when we were in steering discussing this. He brought up, I believe it was it over at the building chairman about the servers and the flooding, and we wouldn't even have a county IT department if that would have happened. That's what the stipulation for budgetary and emergencies are for. That was brought up in committee, and Christensen was able to speak on that. We involved counsel on this decision to make sure that we were adhering to our policies and procedures. The very counsel that is going to be the ones that represent us in any legal matter. The whole purpose of this is to avoid a messy and convoluted process. And by establishing a two-thirds majority, it makes sure that things are flowing through committee upwards to the full commission. But it also provides a tool and a way for things to still come from the floor.
It's kinda, it's interesting when you, when you try to look through it and understand it. My understanding is, the committees report to the, the full chamber. So at any given point, if you need something to go back to committee, each one of us has the ability to stand up and refer it back to the committee. So adding another rule that has a lot of, a lot of more consequences than benefits in this case, creates more obstacles, it feels like. I mean, just take what we just did right before this, the resolution to annex the, the Rockville properties. That would've had to go to multiple committees. And I watched the, the steering meeting, and y'all made this rule, and then immediately right after, discussed the annex, annexation of Rockville. But then it, somebody brought it up, that should it not go back to the other committees? And y'all proceeded, just move on forward to the full chamber. So if you're gonna make another rule, my question is, is how many times can you break the rules just to make another rule and still break the rules? We have rules in place. Why don't we just do like on the national stage with immigration? Follow the rules on the books, and we can get the job done.
Mr. Chairman? We have a motion and a second.
Quick question. What was the impetus for making the, the addition or the change here? Since there was already a procedure in place?
Sure, the biggest reason is that we do not need to have our standing committees bypassed in any way. Every one of y'all, every one of y'all, every one of y'all gave me a piece of paper, and you had on there what you wanted, your, your first choice. You're passionate about it. That's what you wanted to represent for you and your district. And that's what we did. And the reason that we do that, why would we wanna bypass your voice? Why would we wanna do that? Why do you wanna bypass a committee and their voice? So if you don't like what's going on, you can just come up here, just make a motion, and try to bypass everybody. That's not what we're trying to do. We're just trying to keep the standing committees to be in the power that they are. It needs to go before the committee before we just bypass that. Y'all are all vital, important to this process. To this process. Me and Ms. Oliver, we're on different political spheres, but you know what? She has some tough questions. And she's gonna get down in it. And she's gonna make sure that every, every avenue is looked at. Whether I disagree with her or agree with her, she's gonna ask those questions. Why would we wanna bypass that? What makes you think that we should bypass that situation and bypass all y'all? It is important that we keep the integrity of our standing committees. Is that okay, Ms. Oliver? I mean, Commissioner Oliver?
It is. Uh, follow-up question, please. Commissioner Irvin did point out what appeared to be a conflict. So can Mr. Christensen speak to that with regard to one N versus this three A addition? speak to that with regard to 1N versus this 3A addition?
Well, with all due respect to Mr. Irvin, there were a number of questions that he posed, and it's difficult for me to, and that's, seriously, that's not any disrespect at all. And so it's difficult for me to address which particular ones. I can say that the language of this resolution, attempt, the attempt was to, to not be so definitive and defined, because if we do that, and this board gets into this habit of expanding the rules and having definitional sections, it can become very unwieldy. So obviously, it's the will of the board, or the commission here on what they want to do on this. Could there be problems in the future? I'm not going to say no, because that's, it happens all the time. I know we have commission meetings where there's points of order that was called about today. So I think that this is a growing pain for the, the commission. And if it wants to move forward with this, it has to have the realization that there may be issues that come up that I'm sure it can handle. And there can be consultation with myself and with your chairman on the interpretation of this rule as it gets implemented throughout the course of time. But again, it's, it's, it's the will of the commission here on what it wants to do. It's your policies. And remember, the policies can be suspended at any time or amended. So, and, and all the points that have been made here tonight, I think are valid, valid considerations for this board to consider.
If I may, with all due respect, I think a lot has been read into this that just really doesn't apply. I think that, in a nutshell, that all this, all this says, that if somebody wants to put XYZ on the agenda after our meeting's already started, and it has not been considered in any of the committees, it takes a two-thirds vote to put it on the agenda, and then after that, all other rules apply the same. So there's nothing changing, you have to guess about a two-thirds or whatever. I just think a lot has been read into it, it just, just doesn't apply. So that's just the way I look at it, is if you want to put something on the agenda after the agenda's set and the meeting's already started, fine, it's just going to take a two-thirds vote. That puts it on the agenda. And then after that, all the same rules apply. It would have applied normally if it was already on the agenda. Not making any kind of sense to anybody. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Beverly.
I did want to touch, just Commissioner James, you were exactly right, and that's on one point, and that was why I, I wanted to address it. At steering, in regards to the Rockville annexation, the Murfreesboro Planning Department and the Murfreesboro City Council moved very quickly on this process. I didn't see an application with them. Normally, something prompts Murfreesboro to want to begin annexation. They don't do that proactively. And they had already gone to the step of holding a public hearing through their planning commission and set it on the city council's agenda to begin, begin hearing this on first reading. If we were to send it to all the committees, it would not be able to come back to us until they were ready for almost their second hearing on this. And for them to even begin this process without any consultation of this body, we felt it was necessary to send a very strong message that we did not request annexation, and I'm not sure where the idea came from that this is something we wanted.
Commissioner P.
I'd like to make a comment along the same lines there. This did go to committee. It was seen at Public Works, and we decided not to take action. And by that, we meant, we don't want it. We didn't come out and say that. We were trying to be nice to our fellow elected people, you know? We've got a difference of opinion there. But we did see this at committee, and we decided that we would say no. Although we did not vote. But having not voted, the law says we have to approve it. We didn't approve it.
Mr. Chair.
You've already spoken. Let's give Commissioner Anthony Johnson a chance.
I wholeheartedly agree that everything should go through committee. This doesn't stop anything from going through committee. It doesn't stop anything from being presented before us without going through committee. It just simplifies it and makes it a two-third vote. Just like Commissioner Gucht said. I'm in full agreement with what he said. I'm not an attorney, I don't have all that education, but I try to simplify things. I look at all avenues and come up with the simplest solution for this county and in my own life. So I would urge you to please vote for this tonight. It's the right thing to do.
Johnson, now Commissioner James.
Thank you. In, first, the, the annex exemption example was just that, the example, we kind of got off, off-topic with that. But for you, Mr. Beverly, that's always going to be the excuse. It's always going to be, we need to move fast, the main commission moves, moves slower. And I, I agree with Mr. Johnson over here that the committees are valid, they're very important, they're extremely important. But of the seven committees, I only sit on two. District 9 has direct representation on two of them and has to, I don't know, at risk of the sunshine violation, try to get understandings of what the other ones are going to hit before it gets to us out here, right? So that's the concern. I'm wanting to make sure that whatever rules we put forward or move forward with, that the full commission body is the tip of the spear. Subcommittees report to us. Otherwise, what are we doing? We're getting briefings from the chairs of the subcommittees, or the committees, to us. It just feels like we're going, switching that around. And I just, that's, that's where it feels like a hard no for me. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Dodd.
This is addressed to the steering committee chairman. What was the vote on this resolution in steering?
Other comments? Other questions?
Are there just five members on the steering committee?
No, we had two absent.
Anyone else?
Offer a question?
I have a call for the question. All those in favor calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, what, what was the question?
I second that motion.
Okay. Let me go back and clarify an error on my part. When we had that call for the question a little earlier, I didn't get a second on that. So if that makes us illegal, I, it's, it's on me, I apologize. The question's been called for, and since there's been some debate on this, I believe we'll go on the board for this, okay?
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Seventeen yes, two no.
Motion passes. Thank you. Chairman Harris.
Next resolution is on RFP. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that important and non-routine items not already included in the budget that are going through the RFP purchasing committee process should be sent to the appropriate standing committee for review prior to the final approval, assuming circumstances warrant it and there is sufficient time to do so, provided. However, that the purchasing committee retains a sole power and authority to award such contracts pursuant to said RFP process. Be it further resolved that nothing contained herein is intended to conflict with the county's Private Purchasing Act, resolved the 16th day of February 2023, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, and a second. Anthony Johnson. Questions and discussion.
See, I have a quick question. What is the problem the resolution is attempting to resolve?
It's, what it is, is we're trying to make sure it goes through, like, for instance, we had a item that come through, bypassed the standing committees, and went straight to purchasing. And the standing committees didn't have any say or anything on it, we couldn't discuss it. And I'll give you an example, because I know you're looking for an example, so let me give you one. So the lobbyists went through, and it went through, straight through to purchasing. And the standing committees didn't get a chance to, to talk about it or anything like that. So you say, "Well, it was under a time constraint." It really wasn't. But my point is this, listen, and I, and I'm harking on this, because this is really what concerned me, is when that lobby went through, we had no say in any of it. Now, what if, what if the lobbyists that we hired, for instance, you know, supported abortion or, or Second Amendment or legalization of marijuana? We don't know. And that's a lot of the stuff we're against. And if we didn't know that, but we would have known that had it went through the committees.
Okay, so since the mayor's the chair of the purchasing committee with respect to the chairman of the steering committee, would it, could we ask the mayor to kind of outline the purchasing process as it relates to this, and kind of outline, outline the rules? Because this is kind of a foreign area, and if there's any historical type analysis he has, love to hear that too. Just before we kind of get back to it, would that be possible?
Clarify the responsibilities of the purchasing committee and how this affects that.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, happy to. And then anybody need to fill in the gaps, including our finance director as well. So there, there are a few different mechanisms that govern the purchasing process within the county. The first is going to be the county's Private Purchasing Act. It has been amended over the years, but it lays out the requirements for competitive bidding, sealed bids, soliciting RFPs, et cetera. There is a bid threshold of, I believe, $25,000. So the mayor is the purchasing agent of the county, and the chairman of the purchasing committee has the authority to make purchases without sealed competitive bids for things that are $25,000 or under. Now, he still has to get the approval of the purchasing committee, though that's right, Mr. Smith, on those, on those, but he doesn't have to go through the competitive bidding process. For things that are over and above $25,000, there is a person that works in the county mayor's office. She assists the mayor with getting together the appropriate notices for the RFP process and soliciting vendors to submit bids that come before the purchasing committee. Your purchasing committee, while the mayor's the chairman, it is comprised of, I believe, five or six other members, and they're all, six other members, and they're all commissioners. So you do have six commissioners in addition to the mayor that are looking at these and awarding the bids. So that's your, that's your, your purchasing act. There's also a set of internal purchasing policies that are passed, or were passed by the purchasing committee that really give a delineation or detail to department heads of how to submit PO orders and other, and other items that need to be approved by the purchasing committee that may not go through the private, the competitive bidding process. Oftentimes, once the purchasing committee has awarded the bids, those are put in the form of a report that comes to this commission, which you, you all see on your commission agenda, under the consent agenda. And, and so that's how you all get a notification of that. But the exclusive authority to deal with purchases, which is governed by our purchasing act, is vested in the purchasing committee, with your county mayor as the purchasing agent. And that's, this, this body, through its passage of the private act and the general assembly passing it, has vested the purchasing committee to, to make those decisions. And so that's why included in this resolution is an indication that nothing here is intended to conflict with that purchasing committee process. The idea is that for important items that are already going through the purchase, or the bidding process, that kind of touch upon a particular committee, and I'm not, I don't envision, and Mr. Smith, you please comment, because I, I did consult with the finance director on this request to form this resolution. I don't think it's intended or meant to apply to every single purchase that is, is going on. In fact, it probably should be a non-routine occurrence in my, in my mind. But for the bigger ticket items where there's oversight of a particular committee that's maybe approved the RFP process, for example, the waste transfer station and design that was done by the Public Works Committee, they blessed the, the RFP, and then the mayor sent off to, to go and work with the purchasing committee to solicit those vendors. The idea is that for items like that, that before the actual bid is awarded, that the, the selected vendors, as recommended by the purchasing committee, would come back to the Public Works Committee, for example, to say, "Hey, here's what, here's what the purchasing committee's thinking, and here's the best vendor, here's number two, you know, what do you all think?" And then ultimately, though, the purchasing committee has the sole and exclusive authority to ultimately award the bid. I don't think it's contingent upon the approval of the, at least it's not written into the resolution, that it's contingent upon the approval of the appropriate standing committee. That's not what the resolution says.
So this is basically a notice provision?
Yeah, I think it's to alert, for example, Mr. Chairman Harris is, wanted the ability to interview the, the prospective lobbyists that were on the table, not to say yes or no, but to say, "Hey, what's going on with these individuals?", just to use his example.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Beverly.
Again, I'm new at this. We're, I think about what public safety's going to be dealing with coming up with the, Chief Farley spoke about his pumper trucks that are coming up, and how those might need replacements. How this, it could currently go, maybe, public safety puts out the RFP, purchasing executes the RFP, purchases the pumper trucks. But in this case, it goes from public safety, asks purchasing to look into it, purchasing makes a recommendation, and then public safety is the last one to make that decision.
Chairman Harris, was your vote on this unanimous as well at your?
Thank you. So a bit of clarification with regard to the appropriation request for the lobbyist that first appeared in steering committee on December 5th and came out on a roll, unanimous roll call vote. From there, it went to budget meeting on December 8th, passed unanimously by a roll call vote. From there, it went to purchasing meeting on December 13th, passed unanimously on a roll call vote. And on December 19th, we had the opening of the RFP. On January 4th, purchasing emailed the agenda for a special called meeting to be held on January 10th. The motion passed unanimously by a roll call vote. January 4th steering meeting, no mention of a lobbyist or a resolution was mentioned in the minutes. January 10th, special meeting of purchasing was called, the motion passed by a roll call vote unanimously. And January 12th, the resolution on lobbyists was both approved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. Anything else? Any other questions or comments? Ready to vote? Anything else? Ready to vote?
Just clarification, please, on exactly what we are voting on.
I'm sorry?
Clarification on what we are voting on, please, since we've had so much discussion.
On the original resolution.
The resolution on item D under seven, steering legislative committee, that's the resolution regarding the RFP process. Would you like the resolution read again? It's on your iPad. Would you like it?
Not as long as everybody understands what it is.
Any other questions? Any questions? Commissioner Johnson will be more than happy to read that again if you want. Okay. Had a request for us to be on the board for this one as well. So if you're ready, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Eighteen yes, one abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris, and while he's making his way back to his seat, the next Steering Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 6. Brings us to the end of our agenda, and under other business, I sent out you a kind of a little email the other day, and we're going to start a little process. There are really no ground rules, you guys, but there are times when something special happens in your area or in the county, and you just want to shout out that, look what so-and-so did, or look what our fire department did. Are there any shout-outs tonight? Anyone have anything? Yes, Commissioner Reed.
I thought I was going to slip this in tonight, but Commissioner Johnson come in, and he said, I better know what you're going to shout out about tonight. This week, we had a very important day. No, it wasn't Valentine's Day. On the 15th, it was National SRO Day. And I hope all of you, if you've had an opportunity to see one in a school or out here, that you gave them a pat on the back for what they do each and every day in our schools across Rutherford County. And we should be very proud of what they do for each and every one of us looking after our schoolchildren and what is happening here in Rutherford County. We have one of the best in the nation. So I want to just give a shout out to all the SROs from our sheriff's department.
Very good.
Well, mine's on a personal note. Mine is for the Risk Management Director and his personnel. I had a personal problem with my insurance as a retiree. I was notified three days before my appointment that I'd have to find somebody else, because they were no longer in the process, you know? They were no, and so, anyway, I contacted Corinne Gunn at the Risk Management, and she came through like a champion. And I just wanted to shout out, thank you very much for them, because our county employees and our retirees, that is one of the best investments that we can make into this county. And I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. So I really don't have really a shout-out, but I will say, a couple weeks ago, Commissioner Beverley and I participated in the cornhole tournament by the sheriff's department. And I have to say that we failed you guys. We were first group out. So we'll try our best next year to come in first place instead of last place.
Commissioner Gooch?
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if this is the type of shout-out that you're looking for.
I'll let you know if it's not.
But I thought that something special happened here, happened here tonight. Greg Harris was on his best behavior. So I would like to shout out Commissioner Harris for being on your best behavior that I've ever seen.
Okay.
And that may not be what you're looking for, but...
Let me close this up by recognizing Chief Steve Spencer back here. I asked him a little earlier if he could make a couple of telephone calls and see if we're going to have any trouble getting home through high water. And he says that it's all clear. But still be careful, because there were extremely deep puddles of water in some areas when we drove to this meeting tonight. So you guys be careful on the way home. Commissioner Beverley?
I'm sorry. I'd be remiss if I didn't remind, you talk about high water. Fifty-five years ago, the first 911 call was placed. And tonight, everywhere in our county, any citizen's going to be able to call 911, and someone's going to answer that call.
Very good. All right.
One more, please. Please, please, please.
Commissioner Oliver Ho.
I promise you. Okay, I have to shout out Laverne Fire Department, because they earned the ISO 2 rating. So I want to give a shout out to Laverne Fire and Rescue.
Good job. Okay, our next meeting is scheduled for March 16. And let me just say, tonight, we had lively debate. There were some opposing views. And I don't really mean that in a negative way. There were some views that were different from others. But that's what this governing body is all about, and that's how we learn, and that's how we move forward. Do not be afraid to speak your mind at any time. And I'll follow up with that request. Debate issues, do not debate people. And we maintain that decorum tonight, and I appreciate your efforts in speaking your mind and helping this county improve as we move forward. So I thank you for your attendance and your participation tonight, and be safe on the way home. Wait a minute, Nick has told me that I screwed up a little bit earlier, and he's going to try to clarify my error.
Just real quick, it's more, it's more, not just for the benefit of the commission, but also your clerk over here who has to do the minutes. On the fire service part of the agenda, a motion was made to call the question, and I'm not sure it received a second, and then there was a vote. But there was not a subsequent vote on the actual underlying motion. And I don't think it behooves anybody to rehash all of that. So a solution might be whoever made, if everybody can agree that what the vote that was taken on wasn't on anything having to do with a calling the question, and that debate was ceased, and everybody had an opportunity to speak, and that the vote was, all the commissioners said yes except for one, on the underlying motion made by, I think, Mr. Reed and Mr. James, then I think your clerk can take the part about the calling for the question out, and there's no further need to do that. If everybody's in agreement with that, then, with no objection, Mr. Chairman, that probably helps your clerk in the minutes. James and Oliver, I'm sorry.
Everybody okay with that? I apologize once, but Nick says it's not good enough. So he's getting me out of hot water. Is that it, Nick?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you once again, and have a good evening. We're adjourned.